Wish I could get my grandkids to be this quiet. It's twelve o'clock noon, we're gonna call to order the monthly meeting of the Bradley County Planning Commission. At this time, Janie, would you call the roll? Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll discuss the approval of the minutes, were there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes?
We accept the minutes.
We have a motion to accept?
Second.
Second by Josh Rogers. Any other discussion, would you call the roll?
Janie Bishop, approve, Richard Burnett.
Yes.
Doug Kaywood, Mel Griffith.
Yes.
Randy Howard.
Yes.
Keith Jones, Joe Lee.
Yes.
Max Phillips.
Yes.
Josh Rogers.
Here.
Nine approve.
Alright, thank you. Our first order of business is a plat on Bates Pike subdivision, the final plat. The planner says this plat appears to meet all requirements of the subdivision regulations and zoning resolutions. Is there any discussions among the committee? Is there anyone like to speak to or for this or against it in the audience? Are any discussion among the committee, will entertain a motion to approve or decline?
No move.
No move to approve? Have motion and second, Janie, call the roll?
Janie Bishop, approve, Richard Burnett.
Yes.
Doug Kaywood, Mel Griffith.
Yes.
Randy Howard.
Yes.
Keith Jones.
Joe Lee.
Yes.
Max Phillips.
Yes.
Josh Rogers.
Yes.
Nine approve.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is the Kaywood Horton Road property, the final plat. Thank you, sir. Alright, is there any questions or discussions among the committee? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this resolution? It appears it meets all requirements, and I'll entertain a motion to approve or decline.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second, Keith? Janie?
Janie Bishop, approve, Richard Burnett.
Yes.
Mel Griffith.
Yes.
Randy Howard.
Yes.
Keith Jones.
Yes.
Joe Lee.
Yes.
Max Phillips.
Yes.
Josh Rogers.
Yes.
Eight approve, one recused.
Okay. Our next, we have a rezoning request for Stacy and Wendy Beatty, sixty-seven eighty-five Georgetown Road. You can see the tax map and parcel number. Rural Commercial and FAR to General Industrial. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this behalf of this property? Is there any discussion among the committee or any comments from the audience?
What's the proposal, Billy?
It's warehousing, I believe. The property owners are here if you have any specific questions.
Mr. and Ms. Beatty, would y'all like to speak on what the use of this will be? If you'd like to approach the podium and... Would you step up here so we can get you, please? And just state your name, I know your name, but I'll let you state it anyway.
Yeah, Stacy Beatty. We're basically just doing some tidying up, housekeeping, attaching some property that we already have zoned industrial to it. So that's basically what we're doing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Beatty? Alright, thank you, sir. We'll entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Second by Mike? Would you call the roll?
Janie Bishop, approve, Richard Burnett.
Yes.
Doug Kaywood, Mel Griffith.
Yes.
Randy Howard.
Yes.
Keith Jones.
Yes.
Joe Lee.
Yes.
Max Phillips.
Yes.
Josh Rogers.
Yes.
Nine approve.
Okay. Thank you, our next one is rezoning request from Ernest L. Smith on one-five-nine Hollow Road. You can see the tax map and parcel number. From FAR to R four Residential Mobile Home Park and Travel Trailer Park. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this property? Is there anyone that would like to speak? Oh, yes, sir, would you approach and state your name, please, and...
Edward Steen, I live on Willow Creek Cove. And I'm not necessarily for or against that piece of property being developed. But if I could submit this to you, I'd like to know where to go, maybe have... Creek behind our subdivision looked at. Frequent flooding back there? Any more development? I think we'll just encourage more flooding back there. So, can I bring this up?
Okay. Bentley?
Just... Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, just get with me after the meeting, and I'll get you with our stormwater coordinator.
Y'all gonna let you hand that to Bentley if you would? That's part of the stormwater issue, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Charlotte Peak for the record. So, um, when you rezone something, y'all have to consider a few things. And I'm not certain what the criteria is. Bentley can, you can ask Bentley, or I'll ask Bentley in a second. What is the criteria to rezone this property from FAR to whatever? I know, um, I was trying to find it earlier today. Bentley, what was the criteria just to rezone in the county?
Well, the future land use for this property is mixed commercial, which, if it is an RV park, it would be taxed at commercial rates. So, that would be one reasoning for the rezoning.
Okay. So, the property meets the criteria to be rezoned?
Yeah.
At this time? Alright, so, also, do, is there anything else you can consider when you're rezoning the property? It's not in the future land use plan, or you did say it is? It is part of the future?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
It's mixed commercial.
Mixed commercial, okay. Um, in the criteria, you can't consider anything else like the marshland, septic tanks, sewer availability? You can't?
Not at this level.
At this level? So, how many times, if, if it's rezoned, how many times can it come back before the planning commission? So that they can stipulate what goes on, on that property?
Yes, a site plan will have to be completed and resubmitted to the planning commission for approval and review by me.
Okay. So, I know that... Does your planning department or this planning commission have the ability to change your zoning and rezoning criteria?
I don't really understand what you're asking.
Alright, so I know we just, we, we look at just a few things in order to rezone a piece of property. But, say we, this gets rezoned, and then, because I've already looked into all of this. Um, there's no letter of intent from O'Koy Sewer to, um, to service it, because the Old Parksville Road plant is at capacity. They've already gave out all the letters they're going to of intent. Uh, there was a nineteen acre tract on Old Parksville that just, uh, got the last letter of intent for a proposal of homes there. So, that area can no longer sustain anymore until they get another plant built. Well, they won't even consider giving anybody any more letters until the end of twenty-six, when the new plan is built, if they have availability. So, that property can't even consider being serviced until then by sewer. Um, and then I checked with the state on the soil in that area, and they would have to, um... If they have an existing tank to even use it right now, they technically have to get it uncovered and get it inspected by the state prior to being able to use it. And from what I've heard, you can only have so many camper trailers or trailer park or trailers on... And a septic tank at one time, and that would have to be the fifteen hundred gallon one. And I think you can only do four at that. But on this property, there was just an old cabin, it was tore down. So, there's no telling how old it is, there's no record of a tank at the state level. So, my thinking is, is why are we just blanket rezoning things just based off of a few, of the future land use plan? If it meets this criteria, let's rezone it, and then let's let them go through all the hurdles to determine if they can even use it for that purpose. So, you're going from FAR to a trailer park. When's the last time we had a trailer park in, in Bradley County after the regulations, new regulations were done?
Uh, the one on the Coey that Billy Thomas did is the only one I've dealt with in my eleven years here.
So, we have one of the most stringent trailer park, uh, regulation subdivision plans that there is. And that's why people don't want to do them, because they are so stringent. But, we're still rezoning something that you don't know if they can even do this RV trailer park on, or travel trailer park on. The state agency does have some very stringent septic tank guidelines to go on them. However, if they get to that point and they can't use the septic in that area, because it is pretty marshy. And during the rain, you go by there, it's, it's pretty wet. Um, in my expert opinion, and you can't consider this, but, planning commissions before you, they, they chose to open the door on this very conversation by, um, when the SPCA was denied based off of septic and soil at that time. Even though you really couldn't consider it for rezoning, it was considered before it got denied rezoned. So, my point is here, why don't we change, and you can't do it right now, but, we need to consider these things. If he does get it rezoned, and then he finds out, hey, I can't do a trailer park on it, it's still zon- rezoned for that. And then he goes to sell it, and the person getting it is like, hey, I can do a trailer park here. And then they're basing their, um, purchase of that property off of a trailer park that they can't do, because you can't get septic on it. Now, I don't know that he can't get septic, but, from the soil maps, um, online, and that, he hasn't had a soil map that I know of. So, who knows really what kind of soil he has? And that would be his due diligence, but I hate for him to go through all that money of getting a soil map, finding out he can't use septic. And then he has to wait to the end of twenty-six to even get a letter of intent from O'Koy to serve, that he doesn't know if he can get or if he can't get. So, I'm just trying to, I'm hoping we can change our practice from just blanket rezoning things, and look at the bigger picture and find out all these answers may be prior to. Even though you can't really, um, but you did. So, the previous planning commission on the SPCA property did deny rezoning based on septic and soil. So, um, and they didn't have any experts whatsoever. And the state did say that that soil actually did perk and was, uh, suitable for that, uh, facility to go there. So, anyway, that's my comments on it, I was just still curious. And also, if it got rezoned, and it comes back in your site plan, and all of the other aspects you've got to look at to approve, even the trailer or RV travel park, whatever it's called, um, it may or may not even get approved at this level, correct?
Correct.
Do, does this planning commission also have the ability to be more stringent than your guidelines? And say, we want a tree buffer with a fence buffer also implemented?
If it's in the regulations, yes, but, I mean, you can't do a contingency on a rezoning.
Right, I know. I'm just curious if, if, when it comes back, I would like to get everybody to understand how it works, because I know...
There are buffering requirements in the, um, travel trailer park resolution.
Okay, but could they be more stringent than what you've got in there?
That's, we could, I don't believe we would have the authority to, to do that, I don't think.
I think we need to change the regulations.
Yeah.
In order to do that.
Okay.
I don't think we have, Charlotte, I don't think we have the authority to say that you're gonna develop this for a trailer park, Charlotte, but you need to put trees there. I don't, now, they, we may can change it to that, but we don't have that authority to do that.
Okay, but, so, after it goes from here to the commission, because I know we have done this, Howard and I have done this in the past. We have put stipulations on it at the county commission level, that we would approve it if these buffer zones were done.
A rezoning?
Oh, no, not rezoning, I'm talking about later, just trying to give them the bigger picture. That sometimes we come in here and just got the blinders on for this, and they're not looking at the bigger picture. Later down the road, could the commission, if you guys don't have the ability to double buffer this or be more stringent, so that nobody sees it? Because we all come home that way. And, you know, I would rather looked at the cabin than to look at all these campers, but I'm also for private property rights. So, if he wants to rezone his property, that's great. But, we also have to consider the neighbors. And I'm a builder that considers my community and my neighbors, and, I mean, I tear down stuff, and then I make it back triple nice, and I put triple buffers in if I need to. But, coming around that curve later, if it gets rezoned and he does get the trailer park, site plans come to you guys, you guys all approve it, you like what you see, and you are, you don't have the ability to put the fence or the triple tree buffers or whatever, so that nobody sees it. The county commission, I do believe, has the ability to add that.
No.
Are you sure? Because of, no, we've done it in the past.
Yeah, the county commission won't see the site plan, it'll just come to the planning commission.
But they also have to approve it later, they don't?
No.
Okay, so, there is no... So, the regulations probably need to be changed at some point, you guys need to look at that, because that would be the only reason. I would hope he would be good to the neighbors and want to put the tree buffer in without being regulated. But without it being regulated, then, then I have a problem with the, uh, rezoning in a hole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Thompson. Uh, I'd like for y'all to ask them if they have contacted O'Koy Utility. They've got sewer and they've got water right down through there, so, I'd like that y'all to ask them that question. I haven't, I wish you would.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir, approach and state your name, please.
Yes, sir, I'm Ernest Smith. Uh, my wife and I purchased this property, uh, I'm thinking it was around two thousand eighteen or nineteen. Uh, at that time, it was divided into two tracts, which we've had that property line removed, to have one tract of eleven point nine acres. Uh, at time of purchase, there was a current, uh, perk test done, soil sample, and it did, it was approved for a septic system at that time. Since then, we've decided to go this route and ask for y'all to, uh, grant us, uh, the permission to have a, just a small RV park. Uh, since we've bought the property, we've tore down the old, uh, cabin that was there, it was dilapidated, it was just a... Actually, it was a buzzard roost, and we tore it down and cleaned it all up real nice, and have made a lot of improvements on the property. Uh, on the back side, what I'm gonna call the backside, it's divided by a, a dry gulch, which has got, uh, what you might, uh, consider a buffer already in place. There's tree lying all the way across the, from one side of the property to the other, separating the back half, which is where I would intend to put, like, say, a half a dozen, uh, RV spots. Uh, they'll be, it'd be well maintained, uh, they'll be, it won't be packed in there like sardines, it's gonna be, they're gonna, it's gonna be roomy. There's, there's seven acres back there. Uh, it's, uh, quite a distance from the creek. When I say quite a distance, I'm gonna say, uh, least a thousand, uh... I'm gonna say six hundred to a thousand yards from the creek. Uh, uh, the only other issue is the dry gulch that's there, it just catches stormwater when it comes by. Uh, and, and that's kind of a, a divider from the front section to the, to the back. Uh, we'd be happy to provide any buffer that y'all require. I've already talked with Bentley, and he let me know about the requirements, that there is already a buffer requirement in place, which we will, we'll observe. And, uh, I hope to, to get approval on this as to make improvement in the area and make something nice, instead of just the old dilapidated, fell down cabin that, that was there for years. So, it...
Does anyone have any questions from the committee for the property owner? Yes, Keith?
Uh, do you have a letter of content already from O'Koy for the sewer?
We, we've already got the water in. The only thing that I have to do on the sewer is, and, and it was based upon whether I could get approval or not, is to pay my deposit. And they, and we've already went and talked to them about putting in, hooking this up to city sewer. He's already told us what we need to do, that it was seven thousand dollar fee, and, uh, but before we enter into that, we wanted to see, first off, if we could get approval for this before we took that last step. We're already, we've got power, we've got water. There was an existing septic system on the property, on the front half, that there was, at one time, there was a mobile home there. And I suppose they pulled it out too. And, uh, uh, so, along with the old dilapidated cabin, but, we, we have spoke with them, and they said, whenever we're ready, just to come and bring, bring our deposit, fill out the paperwork. And it was about a three week wait.
So, I, I looked at fifty acres out there on sixty-four highway of, of developing myself. And O'Koy, I was, to, just to save you money on it, um, they're not giving no more letters of content, because of the nineteen acres on Old Parksville Road that's gonna be developed, that's already... And I can't get a letter of content to go to pump sewer over there to that, to, to Old Parksville Road. There's a, there's a plan on Old Parksville Road is where it would go to.
Yes.
And I can't get a letter of content to buy that property. So, I don't, I think it's twenty sixteen till it'll be coming down the sixty-four court, coming down sixty-four highway. So, I don't, the, the, the save you money time trying to get the sewer, though, on it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and that, that's one reason, you know, uh, when we first, uh, started into this, entered into this, they had the availability evidently, because they, there was no mention of them not having it. But, according to what y'all say, yeah, you know, it's my, it's our intent to take it to the backside. And I spoke with, uh, I believe his name was Mr. Cook, I think he does the septic permits for all this. And, uh, I had, I got his name, uh, I think in my phone. But anyway, I, uh, I spoke with him about it, and, uh, he, he suggested that I just do a fifteen hundred gallon tank on the backside. And he told me that there was, he was able to put seven RVs into one fifteen hundred gallon tank with sufficient drain field and leach field, you know? So, of course, I'd be working with him on that, but I, I know that it did, at one point, when we bought the property, it did pass perk test.
On that, on that perk test, you just did it for one site, one, one...
It was for the backside, the backside.
Backside, for how many, for how many, uh, when you did it, for how many, one or two or seven or...
When we bought it, it was just perked for, uh, I guess, a home back there.
Right.
And it was subdivided, so there were four acres on the front roughly, and seven on the back. So, they, they perked the backside, uh, and we had, with intentions of, I guess, in case, the realtors, whatever, in case somebody wanted to build back there.
So, just for really one site?
Yes, sir, the one side has been perked. The front side would, would definitely, uh, in my opinion, have to go to, uh, city sewer, if, when it's available.
Right.
But, so, we were just kinda...
So, you really not done a soil map or anything like that for the...
Uh, there, there was a soil map with a, with a deed that when we bought the property, there was one with it, that, you know, told who perked it, and the locations of the holes, and all that on that back section. So, I mean, I don't, I don't have it, but, uh, it was my intention to just reperk it, have it, you know, soil test done. I know it passed before, uh, work that back area. Because it, with the situation with the O'Koy sewer and all, uh, sounds like the front section's gonna be, just be more of a, a buffer. You know, there's a, basically, you know, grassy area, ice cleaned up, you know, whatever changes I need to do, I will. Uh, there's a little metal building there that I keep my, uh, lawn mowers and stuff like that in on the front, so...
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you for sharing. Um, I believe, did you begin work on this?
I did, yes.
Before it was rezoned?
Yes.
And when you began the work, did, was the work done on the front portion of the property or the back portion of the property?
The front portion, I, I, I brought my, my personal camper over there, put in the, uh, you know, plugged the entire, you know, my personal camper.
Yes, sir.
Got water hooked up, and I said, well, I said, so I work at TVA, at the plant, my buddies, I'm not telling, they're like, well, no, we, we rent RV spots, they got me in mind. I said, well, I could do about four RV spots up here, you know, and, and rent...
On the front portion?
Yes, in the front.
And you, and you just had stated that the front portion, you have not done a perk test on it, to say that it would perk and it be available for septic? Is that correct?
I have not.
Okay, but you, there has been, when you purchase, when you purchase the property, that you did a perk test on the back portion of the property, is that correct? And it did perk for one home, is what you said it for? But then, there's also been statements made, which I don't have paperwork in front of me to understand, that, that sewer will not be available, in which you said that you would want to put city sewer, or you would want to put sewer on the front portion of the property that you were already working on?
Yes, sir, that's where I began my work.
But it is po- but it's possibly not available until twenty twenty-six, is that...
Yes, yes, that's my understanding too, what I found out, I was not aware of that. I haven't spoken with it in a couple months since I spoke with it.
So, is your plan now to continue to the work on the front of the property? Or is it to hold off on the front of the property and to work on the back part of the property where there's perk?
Hold off on the front section and take my work to the back, because I know that it perked in the past.
Now, is this a property that you will be having people in and out of all the time? That it's a, a weekly rental, a monthly rental, or is this something?
Weekend rental, it, it, most of the time, you know, of course, I would rent to anybody that was, uh, had a decent looking camper, there'd be a, uh, a year limit on what can come in there, no junk, you know, piled up, you know, uh...
So, is this gonna be for trailer home parks? Like, trailer parks like you would think of as, people would think as like, a double wide trailer or a trailer park in that nature? Or is this for like, campers? Like, you would go buy a camping world?
Yes, campers, all that.
That kind of park?
All RV lots. So, at this point, it sounds like I'll need to move to the back. I thought that I was unrestricted when I first started this, and it is, in a sense, unrestricted, I, I suppose, but it was not zoned RV park, so I stopped work. So, you asked me to stop work, so I did. I've just been under brushing and clearing on the backside, getting it ready. Uh, we bought it, was gonna, we were gonna put livestock there and cut hay on it, and, uh, it may still, if I can't get approval, then we may have to do that. So, I'm just clearing fast, you know, brushing piles back there, getting brush piles, moving, dressing up, looks, looks really nice. It's a huge improvement over what it was, absolutely.
Does there anyone else have any questions? I got a question for Bentley, it meets everything as far as...
Do what now?
To move forward, it, it meets all the regulations forward.
Yeah, I mean, the lot size and, yeah.
Everything. Okay. Any other questions or discussions from the committee? Thank you, sir.
I, I do have a question. So, the comment was brought up about, the comment was brought up about buffering. And obviously, we have a joint resolution that the buffering is already in place in that resolution when it comes to travel trailer parks. Are you in the, I, I would assume that you would follow all the guidelines that are made forth, but do you intend to do any further buffering than, than what is required? Do you intend to put any fencing up? Do you intend to put more trees up than what is required to make the property have a better buffer, or look better, or anything of that nature?
Again, if the, if I'm unable to do anything on the front half, it'll just be landscape, kept, maintained real nice. You know, uh, I've got my one camper there, which it'll have to be moved to the back too. So, it'll just be landscape, kept looking really nice. There was access in the property there, there was actually two more easements going into property, one off the main road, of course, and, well, well, the other one's actually right where we turn in to Hollow Road, of course. There's three accesses, but, uh, at this point, I would just keep, keep it oed, uh, same looking pretty on the front side like that. If there's any buffer needed, I'd be willing to do it, absolutely.
Anyone else on the committee? Mr. Thompson? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank y'all for hearing me.
Yes, sir.
I got one other thing that, that I'd like clarified myself. I work with O'Koy quite a bit on this sewer, about sixty-four highway, it goes down Hollow Road, over to Parksville Road, and up Parksville... and up Parksville Road, whatever. And I know they're building the filter plant. But everybody, this is the first I, this is the first I've heard of this, that they wouldn't hook nobody up in that, in that area. So that is what I want to ask Tim Mason, Tim, not Mason, Tim Lawson about. And find out why he wants to buy sewer there, front there, right on the front property, water in the sewer. And of course, they get, they get through their commission and through state, federal, whatever, they get grants to do projects. And I don't see any reason why, where anywhere that they got that sewer run, that people cannot hook on to. And we've given enough money here through this county commission and through federal funds and everything else, that there's no reason why anybody that's on that sewer can't hook up to it. So I will find that out and pass that, pass, pass that on to planning commissioner too, whatever.
Just follow up on that. I didn't say they didn't say they wouldn't give him one. I said they have not issued a letter of intent for his property. Now, they may, if he says he's only got four or five right there, they may say, cause that's only, on a travel trailer in septic, they only think that that is 100 gallons a day per unit. So they may say, hey, we'll let you hook up four or five to this sewer at this time, even though they're full to capacity. But I know on bigger tracts, they're not issuing any more letters of intent. But I did ask, was a letter of intent granted for this property? But if he goes to them and they remember that they talked to him, they may say, hey, we'll let you hook up those four or five. So I didn't want to get Tim in a lot of trouble here. So he didn't say they couldn't. He just said there was no letter of intent.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Bentley, if you don't mind Bentley. When I look in my zoning resolutions of Bradley County, we kind of discussed this just a few minutes ago, that when you look under RV or mobile park, mobile home park resolution, I believe that's what this falls under. Is that correct? RV?
Yes.
What is, I don't have that resolution in front of me, but what are the requirements for buffering? What are the other requirements for this property? And you did, you know, Mr. Phillips made the, asked you the question that, does this meet all the requirements to be changed over? And you said yes. How many mobile homes or travel trailers are able to be put on this home? Is there restrictions to that in, within this resolution and the guidelines? Just for my clarification and understanding.
As long as they meet the minimum travel trailer park size for a space, which is 4,000 square feet by 40 and 100. And they can get either septic or sewer approval, they could put as many as they can meet setbacks on there.
Which what are those?
I don't know what it would be without a site plan.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm looking. It says each mobile home park shall have a green strip of at least 50 feet wide along exterior boundaries of the park.
What? Okay, is there anything, anybody else? Any other questions? Any comments? Oh, yes. Sir, would you come up and state your name, please?
The 50 foot you're talking about, is that all the way around the property or is that?
Yes.
How far does it come off? Does that start at TVA's property? He backs up to TVA's property kind of, or an easement there. Is the property line at their line or is it, I don't know where it separates?
His line. It'd be his property line, I would think. Yeah.
His property line.
Cause his property line and TVA are not the same. They're, he would have a difference there.
Okay. I mean, so it'll back off of, actually off, it'll go from TVA's line into?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I mean, then is there a way to require some kind of a buffer, easement? No way to stop this happening. So is there a way to?
Yeah, he has, he has to do a buffer. It has to.
Okay, well, where he's got his trailers in the front, is he going to have, have to put a line of trees or something out in front of them? Cause he's saying at some point in time, he may move to the front when he's in the sewer. And then he, can he have to put a buffer there?
Yeah.
He'll have to do a site showing where they're going to be at, where he's going to be set at. He'll have to have a pad on each one of those site shows where they're going to have to set at for the time.
That's great.
Okay. And last question. Talked about how they can come weekly or, I mean, can they move in there for five years at a time? Or can they move in there only for a year at a time?
Well, we don't have any, we don't have any authority over that. I, I don't think so, but I, I don't know. I've never heard of one. Yes, ma'am, back here. Would you state your name, please, for us? Thank you.
Cody Buckner. I live in Willow Creek, Cove. There are several subdivisions back there off Old Parksville Road. Holler Road is our main thoroughfare of how we get from 64 Highway back to our property. Holler Road is very narrow and it needs a lot of work. It is, needs to be updated for the amount of traffic that flows on that road every day. And where his property is, is in a curve. So my, one of our concerns is the entrance to this facility, where it's going to be, is it going to be in that curve, right next to the highway? Or he just mentioned, there is access off of 64 Highway, which would probably be better for traffic on the small road. I will have to agree with Mr. Smith. He has cleaned that property up. It does look much nicer than what it is when I moved there four years ago. So I have to give him credit for that. We're just curious from neighborhood standpoint of the traffic. When you come with trailer, I have an RV myself, so I'm, I have an RV-er. I know where, when you go into RV parks, you have families, children, riding bicycles type stuff. That's not a very good location for children and a lot of activity. It's just busy. That road is very well traveled and there's speed limit signs posted, but I will tell you, they don't mind those people. Cars go very fast around those curves and it's just not a good intersection. So our biggest concern with some of us that I spoke in our neighborhood is the traffic on that road. How much more it's going to increase? And again, the other question was kind of been answered is how much traffic? Are they moving in and out weekly? Is it going to be permanent spots for people? Or are we moving in and out every week and you're going to have different people coming in and out? That, that's very steep where his property goes down. So getting RVs in and out there is going to be a little tricky, just from my personal experience. And then the other concern is the limit. The limit, and I know you've talked about the size of how many are going to be limited, because he says now it could be seven, but it could be 17 by the time this is over. So we just want to kind of, we're just concerned that there's going to be a lot more traffic and a lot more busyness in that area. And just want to make it nice and neat and clean. We all take pride in our properties and just want to make sure that it is, and he sounds like he's got good intentions with that. And if you have a site plan, you know, what's the next step? And can we review the site plan to make sure that the neighbors are all in agreement with how it looks as well? But I like the idea of the buffer. It already does have a buffer. I know what he's referring to. If they're in the back, but in the front, if it's nice landscape and it's an office or something like that, I think it could be, it could be nice, but we're just concerned at the size and the traffic in and out there. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak? Any more discussion or questions among the committee?
Yes, I have a question for Bentley. It's been a while since I read those regulations. Seems like I remember something in there about the roads, the interior roads that service those have to be built to county specs.
That's in mobile home parks.
That's not true for RV?
RV parks can be built to a lower standard.
Okay.
They can be gravel.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, we'll entertain a motion. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, in the back, yes. Come up and state your name, please.
I'm Charlotte Moy and I also live in Willow Creek. I am not super familiar with how all of this works. So I just wanted to ask, like, this rezoning, so he's done a really good job describing to us what he wants to do with an RV park. But does this rezoning also mean that someone theoretically later on could buy it and make it more of a trailer park instead?
Yeah, if it's rezoned, yes.
Okay, so this is not limiting it to just being the kind of RV park describing, broader, okay. That's all I wanted to say.
Yes, sir. Step up and state your name, please.
Kyle Cooper. I live in English Oaks, so similar to others, travel hollow often. Just towards Bentley and understanding, hearing more, towards the regulations that state mobile home and then there's the abstract for travel trailers. Do the requirements for a mobile home park transfer down to that for the playgrounds? If he hits a certain number of trailers or things like that, or is that truly only for mobile homes? So like, he has a much smaller set of regulations that are followed by?
No, I, I think it does.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
The more he puts in, the more, the more requirements he has of the property that he has to do.
Yes.
To provide to it. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, we'll open the floor for a motion. Have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Can we have a second? Janie, would you call the roll, please?
Janie Bishop, approve. Richard Burnett?
Yes.
Doug Kaywood, Mel Griffith, Randy Howard, Keith Jones, Joe Lee, Max Phillips?
Yes.
Josh Rogers, nine approved.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Okay, thank you for all that. Our next item is the Cluster Development Guidelines Amendment. We're open for a public hearing. At this time, we will gavel in for a public hearing regarding this. We've discussed this in the past. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Bentley on this? Is there anything that's, anyone needs to discuss about it? Oh, I thought you were raising your hand, Max. I'm sorry. I was getting ready to say, I thought you were raising your hand there, so. Okay, all right. Bentley, do you have any comments you want to add to that?
I don't think so. These are the exact same changes that we discussed last month. I just put them in the form of a resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the, yeah, it's the last page. To accept the resolution? Have a motion in a second. Janie, would you call the roll, please? Yes.
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 Okay, there's no unfinished business from the last, does anyone have any other business they'd need to discuss or any comments from the audience? This time we'll move to adjourn and see you next month.